Call a meeting to order, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Tom, could you take the roll call, please?
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Walker, Waller.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Posma.
Present.
Baker.
Right here.
Baskin.
Present.
We have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you. Uh, item number one, uh, is a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is a motion approving the minutes from our December 5th, 2022 and Truth in Taxation hearing on December 7th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And there's nothing under recognitions and awards. Item number four is consent agenda, looking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
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 Nay? Tom, might need a roll call on that one.
All right, motion.
Motion by councilmember. Postma, second by councilmember Baskin to approve the consent agenda as is, and aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Nay.
King, I'm sorry, Pashusta.
Nay.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Nay.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Nay.
A motion does not pass, four-three against, your honor.
Okay, so is the, is there a different motion on the table for the consent agenda?
I, I would like to, um, make a motion that we table the appointments, uh, to the next workshop session for discussion.
There's a motion on the table to table the consent agenda this time around for a work session agenda item for the next agenda, uh, next work session at the meeting.
Is that all appointments or any specific ones?
All appointments.
Okay.
Is there a second to that? Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor of tabling the consent agenda in its entirety to a work session in the future?
I think she said just the, the appointments, wasn't it?
Just the appointments.
Just the appointments. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Tom?
Motion by councilmember Pashusta, second by councilmember at large Austin to table all the appointments, so an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Fisher.
Nay.
Waller.
Aye.
Pash- Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Nay.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Nay.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes four-three, your honor.
All right, we will table, uh, the appointments and we are consenting on the other, uh, pre-listed bills and investment and financial report and the licenses. Correct?
Do we need a second motion for that or are we good, Tom?
If we could, please.
I would move that we forward the, or, I don't know, I would move that we approve of the consent agenda excluding appointments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under public hearing, is a public hearing on a five-year capital improvement plan, adopting capital improvement plan. Tom?
So before council tonight is the capital improvement plan, which is in separate files, about $190 million proposed over the next five years. Again, the funding or the project is based on funding, uh, so if the funding doesn't come in from a grant except it was helping pay for it, then that project would be, um, put on the back burner until such funding comes into play. What the five-year capital improvement plan does is it sets in motion the 2023 capital improvements as staff have proposed and councils approved, um, and then sets forward in the next four years afterwards, kind of a template or a placeholder for other projects for staff to do further consideration on. It doesn't mean that in 2020, if it's listed in our CIP in 2024, that it will be done in 2024. That will be reevaluated at the end of 2023, so we'll have things that will shift from year to year. But in essence, uh, what council is doing tonight then is approving the five-year capital improvement plan, which puts in motion the 2023 capital improvements as proposed by council.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions on this for Tom? If not, looking for anybody here from the public, uh, wishing to speak on this matter's public hearing? Hearing none, council, any issues? Looking resolution on item number five.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number six is resolution approving the tax levy for 2023. Tom?
So this is the culmination of the truth and taxation process and setting the tax levy for 2023. Um, council, um, had the truth and taxation hearing a couple of weeks ago, for which council proposed at that point in time unanimously to approve a tax levy for 2023 of $8,283,000, which is a 4.32% tax levy increase. Some of that is historically paid by new growth within the community, usually one to two percent. So we would expect, um, that your, if your house value stayed the same, that you, uh, would have probably a, you know, three to four percent tax increase on the, on the city's line. But we'd propose a request council approve that, uh, 2023 tax levy for which then we'd file paperwork with Moore County and the state of Minnesota to certify truth and taxation for the 2023 payable year.
Questions, counsel? If not, looking for resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Item number seven is resolution adopting the budget for 2023. Tom?
Again, for 2023, based on the truth and taxation hearing, we're proposing a budget for 2023 of $39,811,892. Um, and we'd request council approve that as a resolution.
Counsel, any questions? Looking for resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number eight is resolution authorizing cancellation of certain advar- ad valorem tax levies. Tom?
When the 2015 A bonds were sold for the Austin Utilities Central Facility, part of that resolution included the requirement that the city would levy taxes to pay that facility if they did not have adequate revenues to make the debt service payments. While the Austin Utilities through their user charges has enough dollars set aside to make those bond payments. So for us, we need to cancel that tax levy so it is not added to the citizens' taxes, uh, for payable 2023 in the amount of $1,282,956. So what this resolution will do, will tell the county that we do not want to add that to our tax levy because utilities has funds available to make their debt service payments.
Thank you, counsel. Anything on this? Looking for resolution, item number eight?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thanks, Tom. Resolution number nine is a, uh, authorizing a $42,216,633 general obligation waste water revenue note. Tom?
First on items five through eight, big thanks to the council and the department heads for getting us through again another tax year, a levy year, a budget year. It takes significant time, several months, so again, thanks to everybody. Now on the PFA loan, um, I'm going to actually ask you to reject this resolution tonight. Um, we've been watching the market over the last six months and are in contact with, um, Baker Tilly, our financial advisors, and have been in contact with the PFA this morning on the loan. And the rate, although the rate we've been approved for at 2.638% is a really good rate, the market has changed in the last six weeks to actually drop approximately 69 basis points. A other Southern Minnesota city locked in their PFA loan Thursday of last week at 1.915% compared to our 2.638%. The market was unchanged Friday. If we had locked in Friday, we'd have got the same rate. As of today, Baker Tilly at three o'clock watched the market and said you're roughly in the same range of the 1.9 to 2% rate. The cost of the taxpayers over 20 years is in the range of three and a half to $4 million at the higher rate, which again, 2.6 is a great rate for 20-year stuff. Um, in the discussion with the PFA, uh, this morning, they certainly understood where we're at. Said we've not passed the resolution, so we have the ability to reject that loan and ask for a lock tomorrow morning. And he basically said, I can't blame you for doing it because the market has changed so significantly. So with, with that in mind, and we would qualify for a whiff grant of $2.2 million if the state bonding would approve that, um, at the 2.6 rate because the bond payments are higher, so the affordability is harder for us since we'd, uh, uh, get that grant, which then would, could buy our difference down by a million to $2 million. But there's no guarantee of that because in the 20, this current legislative session, the bonding bill was not approved, so there's no whiff dollars available. If it get approved next year, yes, it would be, we would have access to that. However, if we put in for a bonding request ourself for the, like, the 14 and a half million dollars that was in there, and it were granted in 2023, we wouldn't qualify for the whiff loan either. So I'm banking on a good rate tomorrow by locking in that we'll get some bonding dollars for 14 and a half million and the whiff wouldn't even matter. So tonight, it's been a long weekend, but I would request you actually reject the, uh, loan lock of 2.638%, and we'll contact them tomorrow morning for a new rate lock for which we believe it'll be in the 1.9 to 2% rate versus 2.6. PFA admitted this is the first time they've ever heard anybody do this, so we're trailblazers here, um, but it is technically possible.
All right. Roll the dice, counsel. Any questions for Tom?
Tom, can you explain what the whiff thing is just a little bit more for me?
The whiff grant is based on affordability. So when we have a, a, a rate on our bonds of 2.638%, the payments are higher. So when the payments are higher, the affordability issue comes into play because you got higher payments than, let's say, an Oatana who is paying only 1.9%. So by ha- there's a, there's a certain level where when you get above this affordability ratio, you get, qualify for another grant. And in our, in our case, based on the 2.6 and the 42 million we're borrowing, we qualify for up to about a $2.2 million free grant. But as we lower that rate, the affordability is no longer there because your payments are now lower. So affordability factor is taken out of a, out of, out of account because your payments are lower because you have a lower interest rate or you get bonding dollars. So instead of 42 million, I only need 28 million. And at that rate, the monthly payments are X, so the rates dropped. So the whiff grant is intended to help municipalities get free, get state taxpayer grant dollars in order to buy down your costs. So at 2.6%, we qualify for a, a state grant. If we get it down to 2%, we're not going to qualify for it because our bond payments are going to be lower. If we get state bonding money, we wouldn't qualify for the whiff grant either because we're borrowing less money and that monthly payments just dropped that much further. So it's, it's a grant in place available to communities that have, are going to have a higher debt service payments because you have a high cost you're borrowing and your interest rate is higher than the average than a certain level. Let's say it came in at 2.4%, yeah, you might be awash then. You might qualify, you might not. They weren't able to tell me what interest rate and what borrowing rate we would need to still qualify for that, but it's a sliding scale. So you might only qualify for $1 million if you're borrowing, 40% at 2.6% or whatever, it might be 2.5%. It's a nebulous process that nobody really wants to give you the real stories on, so it's been a real learning experience this last week. Um, but based on the market, again, as of today, that closed at three o'clock, we're still projecting about a 69 basis point reduction from our 2.638 rate that is in here.
Which on our 42 million would save what?
About three and a half to $4 million.
Awesome.
150 to 175 to potentially $200,000 a year. One caveat is we might have to pay in addition, we, our piece of grant, we got a, instead of paying 1% of the piece of grant, we got a, a discount to pay a half percent or $35,000 for the application fee because the affordability ratio again. If we get it at 2%, we might have to pay that extra half percent back again, another 35 grand to save $4 million.
Good trade off. Just great, great work, Tom.
I, I, I have to give credit to Oatana. Um, I have to give credit to PFA for, you know, talking through this and not sending a hitman down for us. And, uh, Baker Tilly, the, our, our representative's there, and he's, he's out with the flu today and he's still presenting, getting me the, the data I need to confirm what I've heard from two other sources, so.
So Tom, for clarity then, just want to make sure, so right now we're set to have a 40-point, like a $42.2 million loan at 2.638. We reject that and then tomorrow we lock in what we believe is a lower rate, but we would be locked at that point, and then we come back and approve that lower rate? I- is there any risk of the market changing between like tomorrow and when we get back together on January 3rd, or we, we would be locked as of tomorrow?
We're locked as tomorrow, well, Anita Legel who locks it in is gone till Wednesday. But she's, you know, basically made it sound like, hey, I said, because I might send it in tonight at eight o'clock, to be honest. Yeah. So she might, um, it depends on what, how she gets with her bond people to see, so. You know, today I was hoping World War III did not happen because that could have affected this. But, you know, the Baker Tilly did take a look and the market didn't change anything materially, so he says, Tom, you're still on for a significant reduction from what you're paying here. So we would lock in and then probably in two weeks or four weeks, we'll come back with the same resolution with a different interest rate.
Perfect. Well, well done.
All right.
So I'm asking originally to approve it and I'm asking you to tell me no.
We're looking for resolution to approve or not approve the amendment to the city's four, I'm sorry, to the, authorizing the $42,216,633 general obligation.
Move to reject.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Uh, Tom?
So an aye vote is in favor of saying no. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
I'm saying yes to saying no.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, motion to reject passes seven-zero and Representative Mueller, I hope you can get us some money.
Hope for the best.
Thank you.
Uh, item number 10 is resolution approving an amendment to the city's 457B deferred compensation plan to allow for a Roth IRA conversion. Tom?
The city of Austin has a deferred compensation plan, as do many municipalities, where the employees, not the employer, can contribute tax-free dollars to a retirement account, much like a 401K. We have an individual who could be a retiree who's requested to be able to roll their dollars over into a Roth IRA. And our plan hasn't been updated for a number of years, but that is standard in most plans. So deferred comp has asked us to sign a new, um, agreement that would then allow that employee or any employee, and, and that individual or any individual to be able to roll their deferred comp money over into, um, this Roth IRA. Again, no cost to the city, it's just a planned provision that needs to be approved to allow them to do such.
Excellent. Any questions for that, counsel? Looking for resolution, item number 10?
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number 11 is resolution granting renewals of the 2023 licenses for the sale of hard liquor on sale, Sunday hard liquor on sale, Sunday wine on sale and three, three-two beer on and off sale. Yeah.
So this is our final, final liquor resolution. These are the ones that are issued exclusively by the city. So we had passed some ones in November, which had already gone up to the state, been signed. Um, so this would be, um, approving all of those finer, final liquor resolutions and then, um, just thanks for approving all the renewals on the consent agenda because we have lots of people that want to operate into 2023.
And we're not all the way through the meeting. Postma may have one more to just throw on there.
Bad rap, Mike.
Home distilling. I appreciate that. I'll keep it to the home distilling.
With that, need a resolution, item number 11?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number 12 is a motion designating the Austin Daily Herald as the official newspaper for 2023. Tom?
We have the quote from, uh, Crystal Miller, Austin Daily Herald for our legal publications for 2023. The rate has gone up 3.1% to $5.64, which is again below the state maximum, statute maximum of 10%. Uh, right now, Austin Daily Herald is actually the only legal newspaper we can use because they're based in Austin. So we'd request council approval for the 2023 rate for the Austin Daily Herald.
Thank you. Looking for motion for item number 12?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13 is resolution approving the Austin Employees Association 2023-2025 labor agreement. Craig?
Uh, thank you, mayor, members. Uh, we have a tentative agreement with Austin Employees Association. Details are outlined, uh, in the packet. Respectively, uh, conform to the instruction council gave us. Be happy to answer any questions. It's a three-year contract. Um, be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, anything on this?
Craig, I have one and I, it's, I also noticed it on our agenda, um, in regards to the, the Juneteenth, if it becomes a state holiday.
Right.
Which I suspect in this upcoming legislature, it very likely will. I know when the feds did it, they did it like less than a week before Juneteenth actually happened. Is there kind of a cutoff date where they're going to need to approve that by for us to be able to recognize that and move meetings around and whatnot?
Uh, it's a good question. We don't have any language that would stipulate it, just upon the state's approval.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything for item number 13?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Item number 14 is resolution approving the law enforcement labor services, uh, labor contract 2023, 2024, and 2025.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members, this is, uh, with our patrol division of Austin Police Department. Uh, three-year agreement, um, again, within the bounds that council gave us for direction. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, counsel? If not, looking for resolution for item number 14?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number 15 is a couple of resolutions for approving the ICM agreements with Hormel Foods. Stephen?
Yes, these two items involve, uh, our domestic ICM agreement and our industrial ICM agreement with Hormel Foods. The first one, item A, with our domestic agreement is currently we allocate space in our domestic plant for a portion of flow from Hormel Foods. With our new plant that is planned to come online in the fall of 2025, that will no longer be needed. So this domestic ICM that's in front of you tonight will expire upon substantial completion of the overall project. The second ICM is our industrial ICM, which we currently have with Hormel. It will continue for a three-year period. Somewhere in that three years, again, likely fall of 2025, our new plant will come online and our rates or our, our, our discharge limits for Hormel with the new plant will change. Those are, those new limits are identified in this ICM, so we'll automatically transition to the new limits. So we've got that in place. And with those changes, we would recommend approval of item A and B for number 15.
Counsel, any questions on this? We'll take them separately. 15A, uh, need a resolution for approving the agreement of the domestic plant.
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Obstand.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero with one abstaining.
Thank you. And the se- next one, item number 15B, approving the agreement for the industrial plant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
I'm staying.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number 16 is resolution approving an ICM agreement with New Tech Biosciences LLC. Stephen?
Last, last summer, when New Tech, uh, was ready to start up, we entered into an ICM agreement for six months to allow them to, um, work out their, their system, get it online, and, and then we would refine the rates accordingly. They aren't to that point yet, uh, where they've worked everything out. So this, uh, in front of you tonight is another six-month extension, taking us through tom- next summer, where we will then have more, more information regarding their discharge limits and we can modify the ICM accordingly for a future long-term ICM agreement. So we would recommend approval of this six-month extension.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Looking for resolution for item number 16?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number 17 is approving a delegated contract process agreement with MinDOT. Stephen?
For construction projects, when we receive a federal grant, those dollars don't come to us directly from the federal government, but rather they're funneled through MinDOT and then MinDOT has appropriate channels to distribute them to our community. And this agreement, uh, just details that. Um, I guess I attribute it very similar to, uh, if we get a Hormel Foundation grant for another entity where we are the pass-through source. But in this case, there is a, an extensive agreement associated with it. So, uh, this is something we have ha- uh, approved in the past. It was 2018, was the last time that it was approved. And there have been some changes, uh, or modifications to our new agreement. And those, those are listed in your backup memo. Uh, fairly standard things that change from time to time as they relate to electronic signatures, certification, uh, Buy America requirements, which always come along with federal funds, um, and so on. So with that, uh, would recommend approval of this, uh, pass-through delegated contract process agreement with MinDOT so to make us eligible to receive future federal funding.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lang, counsel?
Stephen, do they take an admin fee for this service?
I don't believe so.
Any other questions, Mr. Lang? Looking for resolution for item number 17?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Sorry.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller. Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. I have number eighteen is a resolution consenting to the sale of the Austin Utilities property. Alex is here, if anybody wants to step forward, Alex, and tell us a little bit if you want. We have some backup, obviously, but.
So we're here just asking for support on the sale of property. We were recently approached by a winery restaurant. They're working through that sale of that property, and it came upstairs to that part of their cooling system is actually on Austin Utilities property to the north. They approached by roughly ten feet. We took a look at it, and thought the cleanest way to handle this was just through selling them a portion of that property. So it's, it's roughly a quarter of an acre, just fifty foot for that strip from their roadway back to the railroad tracks there. And they've actually been maintaining that for years. It was, it was a surprise to us that they did own it, so. It went to, went to our board last week at our board meeting, full approval, and they went for the same.
The price was like four, four thousand dollars, Alex? That what it was?
Yep. Yeah, we worked with Greg on purchase agreement, and worked out, you know, four thousand dollars.
Do council, any questions on item number eighteen?
So far, we've saved three to four million dollars and found four thousand dollars in our pockets. I like tonight's meeting.
Good, good meeting. Looking for resolution, item number eighteen?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number nineteen is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin, and we do have one. It is miswritten in your backup. It's a five hundred dollar gift from the Hormel Foods Corporation to the twenty twenty-three Pride Fest through the Human Rights Commission. With that, looking for resolution to accept.
So moved.
Is there a second? Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. I have number twenty's a motion appointing George Thomas, the honorary council member, January twenty twenty-three to March twenty twenty-three. Motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on to citizens addressing the councils. Any citizens here wishing to address the council or items that were on the agenda? And on to reports and recommendations. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only item I have is probably here at the first of the year, council members have opportunity to get together and visit on local option sales tax. We need to kind of look towards the future when our flood levy sales tax clicks off,